Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the City Commission meeting this August 16, 2022. Thank you all for being here. And first of all, thank you for your patience. Our previous meetings were delayed, and I apologize for the delay of this meeting. But we do have a long schedule tonight, so we'll try to accelerate the pace. For those of you who are here for the first time, welcome to our City Commission meeting. We usually begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, and then there are a number of presentations or recognitions that we have tonight. Tonight, we happen to have six different presentations. And so it's kind of exciting, the things that are happening in our community. Different commissioners and different individuals will participate in each one of those presentations. So before we begin, I'd like you to all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas.
Here.
Commissioner Glassman.
Here.
Commissioner McKenzie, not present at the moment. Vice Mayor Sorensen.
Here.
Mayor Trentalas.
Here. Just one agenda announcement. R9 is going to be taken up after OSR1. So they'll both be taken up, but just in a different order, and they all relate to the police station. There are also changes, CR3 revision to the dock area and Exhibit A of Exhibit 5. Excuse me. M5 nomination and biographical information form provided by the Fort Lauderdale Historical Society. And R3, there's a revision to Commission District, should say District 2, not District 3. Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve the minutes and the agenda as modified?
So moved.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas.
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman.
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie, not present. Vice Mayor Sorensen.
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas.
Yes, and the minutes and the agenda are now approved. So let us begin with our presentations. I'd like to invite Commissioner Moritas, who will have a proclamation regarding our fabulous kids at Pinecrest High School. Fellas, why don't you come on up front here?
Okay, Pinecrest, come on up. I'll have the students and the coaches, please, and Dr. Markham.
Our tennis champs.
Okay, you all can just stand right up there. I'm going to read this proclamation. On behalf of the City of Fort Lauderdale for all your good work, I'm so excited to see you back here again this year. So congratulations. And without further ado, may issue this proclamation. On behalf of the City of Fort Lauderdale, it's a proclamation in recognition of Pinecrest Boys Varsity Tennis Team 2022 Class 2A State Champions. Whereas Pinecrest School has a long and distinguished reputation for academic and athletic excellence, highlighted by a challenging college preparatory curriculum supplemented by a vast offering of sports clubs and extracurricular activities. Whereas for the second year in a row, the Pinecrest Boys Tennis Team won the Florida High School Athletic Association State Championship. Their outstanding season ended with an 18-1 record. And leading the team to the Panthers' victory was Coach Corey Marsh. His guidance and support earned him the title Coach of the Year. Well, congratulations. Whereas after just four matches into the season, player Kenneth Chan suffered a sprained ankle and a fractured wrist. Kenneth made significant adjustments to his game so he could continue and compete and win alongside his teammates. Good job. His outstanding efforts and commitment to the team resulted in earning the title Player of the Year. Whereas the City of Fort Lauderdale is proud to recognize the Tennis Boys Tennis Team and Coach, Head Coach Corey Marsh, Director of Tennis Casey, Director of Athletics Jeff, and Head of Upper School Joseph Walters. And of course, their headmaster, Coach, not Coach, Dr. Markham. Now therefore, we, as City Commissioners, the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, do hereby proclaim August 16, 2022, as Pinecrest Boys Varsity Tennis Team Day in the City of Fort Lauderdale. And congratulate you all, signed, our Mayor, Mayor Dean J. Transjellis. Congratulations. Who would like to say a few words on behalf of Pinecrest? Jeff?
I'll say a few words.
Okay, sure.
Just thank you very much, Mr. Mayor of the Commission. On behalf of Pinecrest School and our wonderful President, Dr. Dana Markham, our tremendous coaches and our student athletes, thank you so much for this honor. This is the second year in a row that we've returned here, winning the state championship. Hopefully, we will come back again. But most importantly, we just want to say that at Pinecrest, we absolutely model our student athletes, and it's a commend to them for their efforts. Most certainly, their academics come first, and that's what we preach at Pinecrest, is they need to get their jobs done in the classroom before they ever see the tennis courts. And that's what Pinecrest stands for, is modeling character development as well as our success. So thank you very much. It's an honor to be here. And Coach Corey, you are the Coach of the Year for Pinecrest as well as the region. So if you'd like to say just a quick thank you.
I think Jeff hit everything, but thank you again to our President of the School, Dr. Dana Markham, soon-to-be Dr. Jeff Johnson, our Athletic Director, Casey Hamway, Director of Tennis, and our Assistant Coaches, Lee Fritzen, Mason Durbin. You guys were awesome. And I think the boys would be a little upset if I didn't mention one word that was our theme this year, which was brothership. And that just means, I think I've got it. I think it just means to celebrate all the little moments, which will lead you to the big moments, so you're ready for them. And thank you. We'll see you guys again next year. Yes.
Missed you. And then we're gonna take a photo.
Congratulations, guys.
Congratulations.
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 And thank you to the coaches and the parents and everyone who supports the team. You'll have to leave your medals here at City Hall. I just wanted to let you know. Okay, now I'd like to invite Ebony Crispin from AIDS Healthcare Foundation, who'd like to say a few words regarding the monkey pox update. Good evening, Ebony.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
My name is Ebony Crispin. First, I wanted to say thank you to the Mayor and the Commission for having me today to talk a little bit about monkey pox. I am the Director of Legislative Affairs and--
Ebony, can you please speak into the microphone?
Sure, better?
Much better, yeah.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I am the Director of Legislative Affairs and Community Engagement for AIDS Healthcare Foundation. We are a public health organization and just wanted to give a quick debrief about monkey pox and share our six-point plan, and also extend any opportunity that we can to support the city and the staff in hopefully curbing the numbers. Broward County has some of the highest cases in the country. So I think everyone is well aware of monkey pox at this point, but wanted to share that from our perspective, our six-point plan includes that the Florida Department of Health, including the local county, should conduct twice-weekly public briefings outlining the number of new cases and why they are occurring, as well as where. Warnings to the gay and bisexual male population should be launched online, in newspapers, in and outdoor, advertising, advising men to watch symptoms. That obviously doesn't prevent women from getting monkey pox, but we want to sort of highlight who is most likely at this point with testing positive for monkey pox. We also want to recommend that the requirement of signs to be posted in commercial venues that have anything to do with sex work, including strip clubs and venues of that manner that include online applications that people sometimes can use for, quote, "hookup culture." Lobby the federal government to supply vaccines on an emergency basis, and regularly engage community partners, there are many, AHF is just one of them, to assist the Department of Public Health in prevention, testing, vaccination, and treatment of monkey pox. Engage universities to initiate studies to determine the change characteristics of monkey pox in the current pandemic. I share that as our six-point plan. And also just want to say that there is, at this point, there are currently no deaths in the U.S. associated with monkey pox. Having the virus can last anywhere between two and six weeks. We've seen a lot of cases in our current healthcare center, and we're here to be able to provide resources, education, as well as testing and treatment as it relates to monkey pox. Happy to answer any questions.
No, great, thank you. I want to thank AIDS Healthcare Foundation for myself personally. That's where I got my first vaccination, and I'm supposed to go Friday for my second. So you're a great supporter of our community, and thank you so much for all the work that you do on behalf of the individuals that live here. So thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Have a great evening.
I also want to mention that the State Department of Health, the Broward County Division, has partnered with the City of Fort Lauderdale and is offering vaccinations at Mills Pond Park. That vaccination process began today, and it goes Monday through Thursday. And it's from 9:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., but you still have to make an appointment. The way you make an appointment is to go to this particular website. It's called Vaccine Appointment Broward. I know it's a lot of letters, but vaccineappointmentbroward.com. And go to that website, pick your location, and you should be able to make an appointment for your vaccination. Thank you again, Ebony. I'd now like to invite John Sullivan from the Broward County Public Schools, who would like to talk about the Secure the Next Generation referendum that people will be voting on. Actually, voting is taking place now. Mr. Sullivan, how are you?
I'm great, Mayor. Thank you for having me. Thank you to the Commission for allowing me an opportunity, not only to brief you, but your residents. Let me begin by saying, on behalf of the school board members and our superintendent, thank you so much for the continued partnership. We had a very successful first day of school today, and it was no small part with our partners, to include the City of Fort Lauderdale. You fund many aspects of our security apparatus in the city, so we're very thankful for the city's investment. We know it's a financial burden. As it relates to my presentation, Secure the Next Generation, as you mentioned, voting is already underway for the primary. It is on the August 23 ballot. It is on the last page. Is a renewal of our current referendum. We were very successful in the opening of schools today, thanks to the voters' investment back in 2018 and that referendum that is set to expire. If you look at the news, nationally, there's shortages in all aspects of school operations, but due to the referendum and our ability to provide compensation supplements to our workforce, all our academic classes had teachers in front of them today, which is huge. And also, all our buses were manned by bus drivers. So no small part due to the investment that taxpayers made back in 2018. So the referendum currently funds three buckets. Again, compensation, about $80 million annually for our frontline workers, when you think of our system, so the teachers, teacher assistants, bus drivers, custodial workers, cafeteria workers, so really the frontline folks, receive supplements. The average teacher receives about $4,600 on top of their salary annually. I heard you all speak about affordability. That $4,600 for the average teacher doesn't solve all their issues in affordability, but does go a long way in assisting them to really live where they work. Second bucket is school safety. So it funds currently over 500 safety personnel throughout our district. Again, we are very appreciative to all our cities who partner with us in our SRO program. If the referendum is successful, the superintendent has said publicly she's committed to bringing an item to the board to continue to increase our contributions to the SRO program, which would lessen the financial burden on cities such as Fort Lauderdale that partner with us in that regard. And then the last bucket is mental health. It currently funds 100 mental health personnel throughout the district. We know how critically important mental health is to our students, particularly to deal with the effects of the COVID pandemic. So again, it is a renewal. It is not a true renewal in the sense that it is an increase. So it's going from a half mil to 100, I'm sorry, to a full mil, what that means for every-- What that means for every, for the residents who may be watching, for the average homeowner, it's an additional $13 that they're currently paying for a total of $26 on top of their property taxes. And then for the average condo owner, it's an additional $7.50 monthly for a total of $15. Again, that's for the average homeowner. It will fluctuate based on what your property is assessed, so it's $100 for every $100,000 assessed. I know there's a lot of, how to say this politically correct, a lot of noise that relates to our 2014 bond program. I do want to separate that, though. The bond program is about our facilities, our people. The referendum is really about people, funding positions or supplements through the compensation. There was a third-party audit done on the current referendum. It was spent according to what the voters approved. There was no findings in that regard in terms of the referendum that's in place. Again, the referendum is set to expire, so if it's not renewed for whatever reason, the funding for those three items, the security personnel, the over 500 security personnel, 100 mental health personnel, and $80 million in compensation supplements to our workforce, all that would go away. I did forget to mention, there was two reasons for the increase that the Board decided to go. One, charter schools now get their proportionate share. So, if it was a true renewal of the half mil, we'd lose about 20% to charter schools. So, that's why they felt they had to increase it. And a second reason is to better compete with both Miami, who have, Miami and Palm Beach who currently have higher referendums currently and going for renewals as well. It makes it a challenge for us to compete with them in terms of compensation. Our workforce does have options in terms of making the drive. So, those are the main two reasons for the increase. I think I covered it pretty much. For your residents who want to learn more about it, browardschools.com/secure has all their information I presented and expands a little bit more on it as well. And with that, Mayor, I would definitely entertain any questions.
Great. Thank you so much. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Sullivan?
Mayor, I did just want to make a statement, and thank you for being here to bring this to everyone's attention. I'm wearing my "I voted" button, because I have voted. I did see a report this morning that Florida leads the nation in teacher vacancies right now.
Nation what?
It leads the nation in teacher vacancies right now, the state of Florida. There are so many pressures right now put on teachers nationwide, especially in Florida. It's a shame, so I just wanted to thank you for bringing all this attention to us, because it's very, very important. I cannot think of a profession that's more important than one that educates our children. I have never understood, over the many years that I've been alive, why that profession and that issue has not resonated with folks on a much higher level in our country. I just never have been able to understand why we do not pay the respect, why we do not pay value, why we do not understand the importance. As I said, what could be more important than making sure that our children are educated and that they have all of the tools necessary to succeed in a very complicated world? So, again, I thank you for what you do and for being here to bring this to our attention.
Thank you, Commissioner.
John, I have a couple of questions, too. Thank you for being here, and I've really enjoyed working with Broward County Public Schools over the past couple of years. You have an amazing staff, and I appreciate what you do for our community. Are you able to meet the pay level that I know the governor was an advocate for, for all teachers, or what was it, $54,000?
It's a minimum salary set at $47,500. So, yes, all our teachers make a minimum of that amount, and we're grateful that the Legislature provided that funding to move the needle. It has allowed us to increase to the $47,500. But again, it's arguably not enough, so the referendum is the only mechanism that the school board has to levy additional funds outside the legislative process.
Sure. And what will the starting salary go to if the referendum passes, or when?
So, that is complicated because, answer only, because it's not part of their salary. It's a supplement. Since it's only four years, we're not able to make it part of their salary.
Got it.
Perfect example, if it doesn't get renewed this time around, we wouldn't have that ability. And two, we have to collect a bargain once there's any additional revenue. But what I can tell you now, it ranges between $1,400 to $13,000 supplement based on seniority, and the average teacher receives $4,600 on top of their annual salary currently in the current referendum. So, with the full mil, we definitely would be able to expand and move the needle upward. I just wouldn't be able to give you a dollar amount.
Okay, you know, that makes sense. So, I don't know why I thought it was $54,000 for starting teachers. Is that maybe the hope it'll get to that, or was $47 the number that the Legislature came out with?
It's been $47,500 since they initiated. They have put more money into the bucket, so we might be able to increase it slightly, but $47,500 is the minimum in the teacher's salary allocation.
Well, good. I'm glad we're at least doing that. And the second question is the school resource officers. Can you explain if the city of Fort Lauderdale would still contribute to the school resource officer program if this passes?
I do envision that there would still continue to be in partnership financially as well, but we would be able to increase the current contributions that we currently make, which is about, I believe, $64,000. So, with the renewal, there would be an opportunity, there would definitely be an opportunity for additional revenue, and the Superintendent has committed to bring that item to the school board with a recommendation to continue to increase that allocation, so it lessens the city's contributions to the program.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you again. We appreciate your being here tonight.
Thank you so much, and truly, we appreciate the partnership. We cannot have the schools we have in the city without you all, so thank you so much.
Thank you. Vote yes. Vote yes. Thank you.
What really bothers me, what Commissioner Glassman said, well, a lot of things he says bother me, but tonight, you know, Florida experiences, the state of Florida experiences a major surplus every single year in the billions, and all they do is bank it, when, in fact, if they just allocate it towards education. The fact that we are amongst the lowest-paying in the, I would say, 47th, 48th in the entire country, and you wonder why there are so many vacancies in Florida. It just, and I just can't understand why they are starving the school systems when they clearly have an opportunity, unlike many of the Rust Belt states that are constantly trying to close the gap in their budgets. We are, we benefit from so much of the goodness that's going on in the country today, and yet we can't seem to find it in our, you know, in our responsibilities to look to education as an opportunity here to truly bring Florida to the top when we, and when, in fact, we just seem to ignore it. So, it's a shame. I'm just hopeful that, you know, our folks in Tallahassee will take a second look at teachers and the administration, and hopefully, we can do better in the years ahead. Next, we have Vice Mayor Sorenson, who is going to present a proclamation regarding the Lauderdale Yacht Club Sailing Team. Where's the Yacht Club Sailing Team? Come on up.
Thank you, Mayor. Come on up, team. Get on, come over here with me, and then we'll move to the middle. Yeah, just shimmy on right through here. All right, so you are looking, come on, fellas, let's go mascots. Come on, come on, you're part of this. You're responsible here. Get up, come on, get up here. Get up here. You're part of the team. So, you are looking, Mr. Mayor, at not just state champions, not just national champions, we're talking world champions right here, world champions. And just want to read a little bit about their amazingness here. So, this is Lauderdale Yacht Club Sailing Team 2022 Optimist World Champions. So, a little bit about the yacht club. Was founded in 1938 and is located right off the intercoastal waterway, right in the heart of Fort Lauderdale. Whereas Team USA's journey to the championship began with the country's top 200 youth sailors competing in New York in May 2022. You remember that? All right, very nice. Enduring cold temperatures, wind, and rain vying for a top-five finish, the quintet David Coles, Travis, Gil, James surmounted all others to earn their position on Team USA's roster. Whereas three out of the five Team USA sailors, David, Coles, Gil, and Gil were products of Lauderdale Yacht Club Top Tier Sailing Program, along with their teammates, would advance forward to represent the USA in the International Optimist Dinghy Association's World Championship in Turkey. How was Turkey?
Amazing.
Amazing, not bad, very good. June 27th to July 7th, 2022. Whereas this event hosted 267 youth sailors from 62 countries and included six days of individual racing, two days of team racing. After three days of qualifying rounds, Team USA advanced to the gold fleet, which included the top 25% of teams in attendance. Ultimately, Team USA went undefeated and outraced Ukraine in the final race for the world championship title. And whereas David Coats has a distinction of being the youngest sailor on the team and resides in Coconut Grove, Florida, Fort Lauderdale resident Cole was introduced to sailing at a young, at a camp at George English Park, and Cole's mom, Christine, used to be here at the city of Fort Lauderdale, welcomed back home to City Hall. And three world-time champion Gil hails from Pensacola. The trio, who all train at Lauderdale Yacht Club, have each sailed in numerous international events, representing Lauderdale Yacht Club, Team USA, to include the victory at the Optimist Team Cup event in Berlin, Germany, in 2021. Now, therefore, we, the city commissioners of the city of Fort Lauderdale, hereby proclaim August 16th, 2022, as Lauderdale Yacht Club Sailing Team Day. Signed, your Mayor, Dean J. Trantellus. Get on up here and say some words. I'd like to hear from all of you.
I just want to-
What's your name and say something?
My name is David Coats. I was originally born in New York, came down when I was around six years old, seven years old, to Florida. I used to sail at Kew Skane, but then I moved to Lauderdale Yacht Club for sailing, noticing how many good sailors they produced over the years. And through time and all the support they've given me, especially the Lauderdale Foundation, I was able to gain experience internationally and nationally and finally made the world's team with my buddy Cole. And I just really want to say thank you for everyone who's supported me, and yeah.
Perfect. Perfect. Come on up.
Hi, everyone. I'm Cole Fancy. I live in Victoria Park currently. I want to thank Mayor Trantellus and all the commissioners here. I grew up in Arizona, and when I was five and a half, I moved to Fort Lauderdale. And when I was seven years old, my mom enrolled me into a summer sailing camp, which I was not very excited for. But by the end of it, I was, I had found a passion for sailing, and I was awarded a scholarship to Lauderdale Yacht Club to sail. And since then, seven years of hard work and training and support from the Lauderdale Sailing Foundation, I made the world's team, and I was able to compete the world championship and win a few medals. So, thank you, everyone.
Awesome. Let's introduce yourself. What your role is. Yeah, get in.
Hi there, I'm Casey Mahar, Roder, I guess I should say. I'm currently the Fleet Captain of the Lauderdale Yacht Club and also a product of the Lauderdale Yacht Club Sailing Youth Program. So, I grew up sailing there since I was five as well, so I'm honored to be here in this capacity, but also to recognize these boys that have done so great. So, congrats.
Thanks, Casey. Awesome. Let's take a picture. Go on up. Take a picture.
One, two. Ready? Thank you.
Thank you. One, two. Yeah. 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 Awesome. Thank you all. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Always a pleasure. Have a nice meeting. Bye. Congratulations.
One of my best friends from college was on the winning America's Cup race way back when, and he, I've now convinced him to move to Fort Lauderdale, and he lives in Fort Lauderdale, and going to try to get him involved in your sailing program at the Lauderdale Yacht Club. Okay, Luisa Agathon, Neighborhood Support Manager, wants to talk to us about the graduating class of the Neighborhood Leadership Academy. Luisa, how are you tonight?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Luisa Agathon, Neighborhood Support Manager, and today, we are happy to present you our 10th Neighbor Leadership Class. Our graduates represent every district, and together, they have made a commitment to learn, engage, and take leading roles within their community. So, an example of that, last week, they were able to do a donation drive and collect items and partner with us in Community Corps to present some of those donations before Shower and Love Sue support our homeless population. So, thank you all for that. Here with us, we have a number of our graduates that we would like to recognize. So, if you hear your name, please come forward, and we will present you with the certificate of graduation in a class bin. All right. Eric Javen. Christine LaFlore. Christine Jones. William Bill Perkins. And Jaclyn Reed Stills. Yep, you could just stand in the front over here. Yep, right where you are. Exactly. And we'll take a picture together, but I want to remind everybody that we will launch our next Neighbor Leadership Academy in October. So, if neighbors are interested in participating and learning more about the city, they can contact Neighbor Support or visit our website for more information. Thank you.
So, why don't you open, flip open the certificates? Yeah. Freshly signed today.
One, two. Okay.
Congratulations. Thank you for being part of the program. Thank you.
Good job. Congratulations.
Thank you, Luisa.
For waiting.
Now, I'd like to introduce Ryan Beckman and Danielle Davila, the Florida Section of the American Society of Civil Engineers, who will present the 2022 Project of the Year. And guess what that is? We have our esteemed representatives from Public Works here tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right. Distinguished Mayor and Commissioners, I'm pretty happy to be here today. Actually, in a few minutes, you're going to receive an award from the American Society of Civil Engineers. But before that, we're going to be playing a video, so you can see the details of this project. Just to give you a little bit of perspective, right, put this in perspective. I've been doing this for 22 years, and I would say this is a project of a lifetime, and I think all of you residents and commissioners should be proud of this. So, the first thing I'd like to do is to congratulate you and thank you for your leadership, because a project of this size, the speed at which this project was done and the complexity, it could not be accomplished without your leadership. I also would like to commend your Public Works Department, as well as your Procurement Department and your Finance Department, because they all worked together in unison to, you know, go through the project and the process in an efficient manner. And again, this is something that you don't see every day. Take my word for it, at the beginning of the year, I was presenting in Orlando at the state level. This project was awarded the American Council of Engineering Corporations State Award for Excellent or Best Project of the Year. Later on, I was in Washington, DC at a national level, receiving a similar award, American Corporation of- it could not be accomplished without your leadership. I also would like to commend your Public Works Department, as well as your procurement department and your finance department, because they all worked together in unison to, you know, go through the project and the process in an efficient manner. And again, this is something that you don't see every day. Take my word for it, at the beginning of the year, I was presenting in Orlando at the state level. This, this project was awarded the American Council of Engineering Corporations State Award for Excellent or Best Project of the Year. Later on, I was in Washington DC at the national level, receiving a similar award, American Corporation of Companies. And then just last year, I mean, last month, I was in Indianapolis. So without further ado, I think you should watch the video. Thanks again.
Look familiar, folks? Look familiar, folks? Look familiar, folks? Look familiar, folks?
Well, I guess whatever I have to say is worth repeating.
The Fort Lauderdale $65 million emergency design build project has become one of the most unique pipeline projects in the world. The Fast Tracked Project installed 39,000 feet of 48- and 54-inch HDP pipe, utilizing 17 large directional drills. The city of Fort Lauderdale experienced a series of breaks along its aging sewer transmission main that resulted in over 200 million gallons of sewage spilling into the city's waterways. The city quickly awarded two design build contracts to install a new force main to serve as a redundant line. The lead contractors, Murphy Pipelines and David Mancini and Sons, quickly mobilized and began construction of the emergency project. With the flow capacity of 64 million gallons per day, the new 7.5-mile-long sewer force main crosses two canals, the intracoastal waterway and several major county and FDOT roadways. Approximately 6.7 miles or 91% of the pipeline utilized trenchless technology, installing new HPE pipe. Chenmore and Associates and A&amp;P Consulting Transportation Engineers led the fast-tracked engineering design, permitting, and CEI for this project. Other engineering firms include Hazen and Sawyer and Craven and Thompson. The project included 39,000 feet of 48- and 54-inch pipe, staying 91% trenchless. 17 large diameter drills within a highly urbanized setting, one of the largest HDD projects to be installed in a downtown environment. The size, location, and complexity make this one of the most unique pipeline projects in the world.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am humbled to be back here to recognize the engineering excellence characterized by the city of Fort Lauderdale's redundant force main project. My name is Ryan Beckman, and I am the current president of the ASEE Broward Branch. ASEE stands for the American Society of Civil Engineers and is the oldest national engineering society in the United States. Each year, our local Broward Branch hosts an annual officer installation and awards banquet to induct our incoming executive board and recognize individuals and projects that have made a difference in our community. Back in October of 2021, it was an honor to recognize the city of Fort Lauderdale's redundant force main project as the 2021 ASEE Broward Project of the Year. I was then able to take our local award winners and renominate them at the state level to the ASEE Florida Section to be considered across the entire state of Florida. I am proud to announce today that on behalf of the ASEE Florida Section, the 2022 Project of the Year is the city of Fort Lauderdale's redundant force main project. Now to briefly summarize and put into words the major takeaways from the video shown beforehand, this project is a true testament to the importance of engineering and what can be accomplished when multiple parties come together to achieve a common goal. Back in December of 2019, the city of Fort Lauderdale experienced numerous breaks to its aging seven-mile sewer transmission main, resulting in over 200 million gallons of sewage spilling in the nearby waterways. Due to these breaks, the city declared an emergency and awarded two design build contracts within two months of the first break. Utilizing the design build method, delivery method, to expedite the process, the project was divided into north and south sections and was awarded to two teams to design, permit, and construct each phase concurrently. This emergency pipeline procurement project included the installation of a new seven-mile, large diameter HPE force main. To expedite installation and based on previous successful projects, approximately six miles of the seven miles of HPE pipe was installed using trenchless technology through 17 horizontal directional drillings through the heart of downtown Fort Lauderdale and adjacent residential areas. Using, utilizing trenchless technology and HPE pipe provided significant cost savings from both the material and insulation perspective. These methods were also able to reduce environmental impacts and minimize traffic and neighborhood disruptions. The project's original schedule was set at 49 months. Using the design build delivery, trenchless technology, and HPE pipe, the project was completed within 18 months. A very impressive feat considering the project was executed during the pandemic. I would now like to acknowledge all parties involved that played a role in the success of this project. They are the city of Fort Lauderdale, Hazen and Sawyer, Chenmore and Associates, A&amp;P Consulting Transportation Engineers, Craven Thompson and Associates, Murphy Pipeline Contractors, David Mancini and Sons, DBE Utility Services, and Centerline Directional Drilling. Thank you all again, and congratulations on winning the 2022 Project of the Year on behalf of the ASEE Florida Section.
Hey, I just want to say a few words. Very grateful with the American Society of Civil Engineers. This is a great honor. I want to thank the mayor and the commission and the city manager. They, we had their support their whole time, every day. I don't know how many times I call you, you know, and they were always there. But especially, I also want to thank Strategic Communications, Ashley, Sophia, and Diana. They maintained the residents aware of everything was happening every day. And without them, this project would not have been as smooth as it was. So, thank you very much. Thanks for the work.
They say necessity is the mother of invention, and clearly, we followed a dark path when we neglected our sewer system. And thank God, we have such talent and initiative in our staff. Thank you so much to everybody in our staff for moving forward and making this situation right. Very good. Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, I just wanted to echo your words, but also, you know, watching that video, I actually got some goosebumps. I don't know if the average citizen in Fort Lauderdale realizes the magnitude of this project and, and the work that went into it from every single person that was just standing up here and then everyone in the field. And to come in ahead of schedule. But I wanted to thank the engineers for being here this evening with us and for this honor. It really is an honor. And again, I, I just think that we should make sure that everyone understands, really, truly, what a great accomplishment it was. And I, I feel very proud, serving the city and being just a part of it from this commission. And I thank all of you and staff and Public Works and, you know, the engineers who really took the time to look at the projects and bestow this honor upon the city. But I just wanted to reflect on that a moment, because again, I think that the average citizen does not understand what happened here and what a project this was and the magnitude of it. So I just wanted to say thank you. Thank you to anyone who touched this project for making it happen and restoring faith in what we can do as a city and what we can focus on. And I just wanted to say thank you.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you very much, we appreciate it. So before we begin the meeting and the agenda, I just want to take a moment and ask that we all take a moment of silence in respect for the folks that we, we announced today who had passed away recently in our community. Paul Edward Daley and Betty Athanasakos. If we could just have a moment of silence in respect for their having now passed away.
And the Reverend.
Yes.
Rogers.
Give me a moment. Thank you. So at this point, we will begin our, our regular agenda. The agenda begins with consent items. Consent items are voted on as a group unless an individual commissioner or myself pulls an item, and we will vote on that separately. If there's someone who wishes to speak on that item, that would be the time in which you can speak. If the item is not pulled, then I would invite you to speak before we begin the discussion. And I'm looking at the people who have signed up tonight. No one has asked to speak on any consent agenda items. Is there anybody here who sees a consent agenda item they wish to speak on? Okay, no one seems to be interested in speaking on a consent agenda item. So Commissioner Moritas, do you have any items you wish to pull?
No.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, mayor. CM7.
CM7. And Vice Mayor?
Nothing, thanks.
Okay, thank you. So except for CM7, the, is there anyone interested in speaking on CM7? Okay, so except for CM7, do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. So all the consent agenda items are now approved, except for CM7, which is a motion accepting a donation of three Tech Ball tables with an estimated value of $7,197 from Tech Ball U.S.A. Thank you very much, everybody, for staying. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, thank you, mayor. I was not familiar with this game or sport or however it wants to be classified. But, so I did a little research and I went online. It's a fascinating game. I don't know if you're aware of it, but I had some concerns, and I just wanted to ask staff about it. And we talked about it a little bit at my pre-agenda meeting last evening with the district. But I just have some concern about how many events we're thinking of bringing this out, because it says that it will be located on an appropriate location on the beach and will be used during the city's special events that are produced throughout the year. If we could just get a little bit more specificity with that? Will there be additional staffing when these are placed on the beach? What are the waivers in terms of liability and supervision? Because it looks like it can be quite a, I guess if unsupervised, or it looks like it could be quite a rough game, but quite, I don't know, just something that I could see things happening. I just wonder if we properly vetted it, Phil? Or what is the goal here in terms of having it located on the beach, these three tables? And how would that function as a game or sport?
So Commissioner, we'll have, we'll have two tables on the beach, permanently on the beach, and they're just be used for pickup play for people who want to come down and play the game. As you've seen, it's, it's not a game that's probably something a novice would do. It's something that people that play soccer or into the game would utilize. And then the other one is, the third table is more of a portable table. And the idea is with some of the individuals that are, to play the game, would come to our special events. We haven't decided which ones yet, ones that would make sense. They would actually come and show people how to play the game and kind of introduce people to the game. So we were, we were approached by this company that wanted to donate them. They actually wanted to donate a whole bunch more of them to us. But we told them we wanted to start small and just see how they worked and, and if, you know, if people took to them. And if so, then we would be glad to take on more. But at this point, we're just taking the three.
So we're going to have two that will be permanently on the beach? Do we know exactly where?
Down on the, on the south end, down in what we call our activity area. So down by the volleyball courts and that area down in there.
Okay, for those of you that don't know or haven't seen, it's like a very big curved ping pong table, but it's played with a soccer ball. And the teams actually, they, it's like soccer in that you cannot use your arms or hands. So they're really using their feet and their heads. And it looks, it gets aggressive, but, so I just said, well, gee, nothing can go wrong there on our beach. So I'm just thinking, I just want to make sure we're not just taking these tables without monitoring it, without being prepared, and just sort of, you know, guiding it along. I just, just wanted to express that, just because it looks intense. It's, it's fascinating. Watch the videos, it's crazy.
Do you have an objection to accepting the value of the tables?
No, I'm going to be, I'm, I'll support this. I just wanted to mention that I think we need to be cautious and we need to be careful in how we, how we place these in approach.
Well, if it's too edgy for you, stay away from the-
No, I, look, I'm all about edgy. Don't worry about me and edgy. But I just think that we just need to be prepared, that's all. That's all I'm saying. We can move on now. I'm going to, I'm going to support this.
Stick to pickleball.
It's intense. You have to be pretty athletic.
I'm just saying, I, I watched these videos and I said, wow. I never even heard of this. Never heard of it.
Would you like to make the motion to approve the item?
Yes, I will make the motion to approve the item.
Second.
Second, okay. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie is not present. Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the item is approved. Thank you for the donation of the three Tech Ball tables. We have M1, which is a motion approving event agreements and related road closures, as well as request for music exemption and road closure of the barrier island after 10 a.m. Anyone have any questions with regard to this item? Okay, someone like to make a motion to approve?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie is not present. Vice Mayor Sorensen?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and M1's approved. M2, motion approving an event agreement, extended road closure beyond 10 a.m. on the barrier island for exotics on the beach. We have a few people signed up to speak. Anyone have any questions with regard to this? Or ready to open public? Bill Brown, would you like to comment?
I have some comments, but I'm perfectly willing to listen to the public. We had a long conversation about this at my pre-agenda meeting last evening, because it's scheduled to take place in District 2 on the Las Olas Ocean side.
Bill Brown, followed by John Hirsch, followed by Lauren Berkeley.
Good evening.
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, members of commission. Before I speak on M2, if you would indulge me just 15 seconds to make a personal comment on behalf of the residents of the Central Beach area. It was great to see the, the presentation on the force main project. And I remember sitting in this chamber that evening when, when that project was presented. And I was interviewed by a reporter. Based on the comments, mayor, you said that this is a can-do commission. And my comment to that reporter was, this commission is not only a can-do commission, but is a commission that will do it. And tonight, approved, you did it, and you will continue to do things the right way. So congratulations to all of the commit, five of you and four of you that are here. But you were the same group that approved that several- But you were the same group that approved that several, a few years ago. So thank you and congratulations.
Thank you. You have an extra 20 minutes now.
Well, I should get at least three minutes representing the homeowners association. Tonight on M2, on exotics on the beach, when this was presented to the Special Events Committee on July 13th, just a couple days before that, when we saw it was on the agenda, we had some concerns. But I participated in that meeting with an open mind, and those concerns were all based on this commission denying the La Solas exotics on La Solas down the west end of La Solas, primarily the fact that the concerns were from many of the residents about street closures, trash, the loud noises, the cars doing circles, revving their motors. And those were some of the reasons that this commission voted it down that evening. But with that, going in with the open mind listening, I looked at the event application that had attendance of 5,000. Well, we all know that the last few years, the attendance has been well over 5,000. In upwards, it was even advertised after the fact of close to 40,000 that participated. So I asked the event coordinator, how are you going to keep this thing to 5,000? Oh, we will. We'll keep, we're going to do less promoting and advertising. Okay, fine. But you know what? If you build something and they build it up to that level of 30, 40,000, they will come. They're going to come again this year. So that's our concern. Some of the concerns are about the EMS coverage. If you're going to staff an event for 5,000, same with law enforcement, planning on porta lats for a group of 5,000, trash pickup of 5,000, then you have 40,000. I'm going to rush through this real quick. Even today, Commissioner Sorenson had people raising concerns about all the traffic problems on the beach and the backup. Well, you know what? We're getting saddled with the number of events on the beach, and that's the reason why. You know, at some point, enough is enough. You've even said it, Mayor. You hear it all the time about street closures. That area was never designed to close it down, La Solas, as much as it's being closed. That park, the Loop Park, was to be a relaxing event venue site so you can come. Now they're coming down their parking cars all along the walkways around that, the Loop Park, and closing down the Festival Boulevard in front. And we just, we have concerns. Those concerns have never been addressed. We have never been addressed by the promoter. And this even goes beyond the residents. We've heard, and I'm sure members of this commission has heard from the hoteliers about when the events and the streets are closed and the backups, that their guests can't even get to the airport in a timely fashion. And this is just another day, if this event gets approved tonight, will delay and hinder all that traffic movement of our tourists coming. So our board, we've not had an opportunity to present to the general membership, but the board did pass a motion that it was unanimous consent by the CBA not to support this event application based on the event's organizer's history and concerns in connection with what has occurred in the previous years of this event. And with that, I'll entertain any questions. And, you know, you close the La Solas area six times a year at the west end. Well, why don't we have some of the same types of qualifiers on the numbers of times that that street can be closed down? Because you shut down La Solas in front of the Loop Park. You've all seen it. You've been down there. You know the traffic concerns. There's just not enough correct flow pattern to get around the neighborhood. So it's just becoming more and more of an issue. And I don't want to sound like a record record, but, you know, something's got to be done, and we need your help in figuring this thing out. Thank you.
Well, Bill, you know, it's interesting what you're saying because that section of La Solas, the festival street, was intended to be closed down. It was intended to be closed down, which is why there's no curb there on the sidewalk. It was intended to be a pedestrian area for occasional use for whatever we were doing at the park. It wasn't really, I mean, I understand people want to get to and fro places, and you say that guests at the hotels can't get to the airport on time. But I also hear from the hoteliers that they're excited that we do things there, that there's something for their guests to go see. They walk down the street and there's something fun for them to do. So I hear both sides. And I think some of the shortcomings that you heard from the La Solas merchants regarding this type of event, I'm hoping that you and the people that you work with can try to head off those concerns. And I think it's security, garbage, cleanup, you know, the crowd is going to be a much smaller event, right, than the one on La Solas? Won't this be, because there isn't as much space.
That's what the event organizers are saying. But as we all know, if you've had a successful event in the past, if it's a nice day, people are going to hear about it, they're going to come down. And with all due respect, Mayor, you said the word occasionally closed down that street. What is your definition of occasionally?
Well, that's a good question.
And it's becoming more and more than just an occasion. It's about all the events pretty much at the Loop Park.
I understand.
You know, I mean, you know, as well as myself, as President, CBA, and members of this commission, the Central Beach Alliance and its residents are more, we work more together with developers and event organizers than a lot of the neighborhood groups do. And we try to build collaboration, and they reach out to us. And in this particular case, we were just taken back knowing that all of a sudden it just showed up on the special events agenda. And even up to tonight, other than on answering the questions on the special events meeting on July 13th, we have not heard a word from the event coordinator. Yes, we will work with any events organizers, you know? We have concerns. They're a for-profit corporation, you know, yet they give donations, they say, to a veterans' group. But overall, they're a for-profit corporation using city resources. And, you know, at what point do you use a for-profit corporation at the expense of the taxpayers' dollars? That's some of our other concerns. So, you know, we're willing to work.
They're here tonight. Maybe we can ask them those questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. John Hirsch?
Mayor, I wanted just to add something to what Bill just said that I didn't hear anything about. And I understand what you're saying about the excitement of events for the hoteliers and everyone, but I think there does come a point where it's just a little bit too much. The beach certainly hosts more than its fair share, I think, of events in comparison to other parts of the city. So the neighbors are good about it. They're used to it. But I've never heard the neighborhood association actually speak against an event. This is the first time that I actually heard that we are opposing this event. So I did dig a little deeper, and we talked about this last night at my district meeting. But we have to also consider, there's a major project going on right there with the La Solas Marina. There's a lot of traffic issues right now with the road closures and the redirection of traffic. That's a huge project very close to this. And if you look at Exhibit 2A in the backup, you'll see that cars are really placed everywhere. I mean, we're talking sidewalks, we're talking pavers, we're talking everywhere. So I don't, I happen to agree with Bill. I think that this is not going to get just 5,000 people. I think this is going to get an incredible number of people. And I don't think it's going to be manageable there. I don't think it's going to be manageable for all the reasons we just talked about, for what Bill just talked about, especially with the La Solas Marina work. There's already such a very sketchy approach to MOTs, to how people can navigate and get around. And I do have a question from Alan also. Alan, I want you to explain, correct me if I'm wrong, but exotics on La Solas, when we denied that event, they went to court and sued us, correct?
They did institute a legal action challenging the decision. It wasn't necessarily a lawsuit per se. It was a petition for writ of certiorari. I'm not going to comment too much on the merits. We filed a motion to dismiss, but there was a legal action instituted, yes.
So there was a legal action instituted against the city, but then we're just fine saying, hey, we were sued, but we're going to maybe give an event somewhere else in this? It just seems strange to me that while there's litigation or legal action, as you said, that we can then go ahead. Why can we now still go ahead and consider granting an agreement for an event from an organization that has taken legal action against us?
Well, there's no bar to it. We have to follow our process objectively. So we don't have considerations of that sort built into our process. So they shouldn't necessarily be penalized because they've challenged the decision. It's just not part of our process.
Okay, I hear you. Again, Mayor, I'm going to support the neighborhood association's non-support of this event for all of the reasons that have been stated. I just think it's crossing the line of what we need to do in an area, in a particular area, that's already been, as I mentioned, taking on its fair share of events. I don't think this one's going to end well, and I think that the same reasons that we were concerned when the event came forward on La Solas Boulevard, obviously further west, will still be a major issue at the La Solas Ocean Side Park. So for that...
Well, let's let us conclude our public comment, and then we can have arguments. Mr. Hirsch? Lauren Berkeley? Yes, come on up. I hope you have a lot of answers.
Good evening. Lauren Berkeley, on behalf of the event, I am an attorney, and it's quite concerning hearing some of the comments that I'm hearing, especially from government officials, that somebody should be penalized for exercising their legal right to seek a remedy within the judicial system. So because there was a review as to whether or not the commission followed the law filed in the court system, that a government official would now want to penalize somebody by denying...
That's not what I want to do.
We should, we're not going to get into this discussion.
And that's mischaracterizing my words. I simply asked a question of counsel about our process. I'm not saying you should be penalized because...
Yeah, Mr. Berkeley, let's get past that. Let's just go to the merits.
Let's just talk about this particular event.
Please don't twist my words.
We have the CBA, who's represented by...
Mr. Brown.
Mr. Brown, making comments based totally on hearsay. He has no evidence. There is no evidence presented to the commission right now about his concerns. There is no testimony. There is absolutely no credible evidence whatsoever to deny the event. The concerns are concerns that were expressed on a prior permit application that was denied. It was denied because there was lobbying by the La Solas Association.
We're not going to get into that.
Okay.
The courtroom is the place for that. We're not going to get into that here.
So, Mr. Berkeley...
That's your opinion, and if you're telling me to stop...
Your counsel, they're represented by counsel, and I'm telling you not to say that to my client if you refuse to do that. They're represented by counsel.
I'm not allowed to express a legal...
Did you ask my permission to talk to them before you got up there?
I was given the permission to be up here.
These are my clients. They're represented by counsel.
Are you telling me to go sit down, that I'm not allowed to talk to them?
I think that's probably a good idea.
So you're denying the event, the opportunity to have due process...
Your client, parties can talk to each other. Your client can come up and talk.
Well, my client's represented too. Are your clients going to talk to my client?
You cannot talk to my client unless you have my consent. You filed a lawsuit, we're in court. If your client wants to come up and speak to them, parties can talk to each other. You, as counsel, cannot. And you've already gone into areas of the litigation that you shouldn't.
Okay, so just for the record, so we're clear when this winds up in court again...
And this is precisely the reason why you shouldn't be talking to my client, because you're trying to build a record for the other case. So I suggest we stop talking at this point.
Well, I happen to disagree with you, but if you're telling me to sit down...
Well, the mayor can ask you to sit down.
Mr. Berkeley, why don't we just talk about the event?
I'm happy to do that.
I think that the concern about the event is that it's such a popular event, and a lot of people want to attend it. And the response that I'm hearing from the Central Beach Alliance is that we don't know if that particular area has the capacities to sustain the popularity of the event. Congratulations that it's a popular event. And we love, I personally love the event. I've been to it many times. But I think we're just trying to find a place for it. I don't think we're trying to joust here on legalities. You know, being a lawyer, I get all that, but that's not really how we're going to settle this tonight. Let's just talk about the event and how we can make it happen.
Can I address that, then? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, so my understanding is that Mr. Hirsch met at the event site with city officials. Parks and Recreation was there, the police department was there, and other government agencies were there that are necessary in order to...
Was the neighborhood association involved?
I believe that a representative from the neighborhood was there, but Mr. Hirsch could better ask that. But in regard to the permit application being applied for, the parties meeting at the site event to ensure that the event could take place safely with EMS, with law enforcement, with security, ensuring that there's cleanup, there's a proper MOT, all that has been submitted. And again, it's on calendar for motion for approval because the parties or the personnel at the city that review the applications and make a determination based upon their internal, you know, guidelines that they follow for every event, not just this event, they feel that the event can take place. If there are concerns, then we're happy to talk about those concerns and put measures in place to address those concerns. For example, if MOT is a concern, my client's already met with MOT, and it's my understanding that there's already a plan in place that could address the traffic issues. But again, this is any event that takes place in the city of Fort Lauderdale, whether it's on the beach, downtown. It is an unfortunate, I guess, collateral consequence of having any event, whether it's this event or one of the numerous other events that take place throughout the year. So understanding that there's good and bad that come along with it. It is a popular event, as the mayor said. It brings revenue to the city. It brings more notoriety. Obviously, the city of Fort Lauderdale is world-renowned and known on its own for, you know, decades. But it just, in our view, increases the public view, popularity of the city. And again, it does benefit some Veterans Affairs entities that are supported and receive donations. So again, that's my long-winded answer to your short question as to the concerns that have been expressed by the CBA, and they are easily addressable. But again, they're concerns based upon, you know, third-party, I guess, hearsay at this point.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Berkeley? All right. Did you want to add to your remarks or you concluded your remarks?
Well, understanding that we're limiting just talking about the event and the concerns, that's all that I have in that regard.
Okay, all right.
But if I could just finish up by saying one thing, regardless of whether it's the exotics on the beach event or any other event that takes place in that area of the city, the concerns can be applied to any event, but it just seems like, as Commissioner Glassman said, this is the first time he's ever heard somebody objecting or speaking out against an event. And it's not a coincidence that that happened. And if there was a basis or a history of the event taking place in this particular part of the city, then I would understand a concern if there was a bad experience. But prejudging the event and prejudging the outcome of how many people may or may not come is, again, something that is not supported by any facts or evidence. So we do respectfully request that the commission approve it despite, you know, some tension. We're all human beings here. We all have our opinions. And if I said or did anything that was offensive, then I apologize. It's not personal. But at the end of the day, it is a situation where it seems this event is being targeted, which is a shame because it is a popular event. So we're hoping we can look past it, give the event this one opportunity in this new area, which I think is a great area. It can work out. The city of Parks and Recreation was there, and they believe that it's an event that can be successful and be safe. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Hirsch, did you want to speak? Come on up.
I would just advise again you, the commission, if please not to discuss the prior event.
Yeah, I'm not here to discuss that. Thank you guys.
So tell us about your show.
Our show apparently has a lot of attention.
Speak into the mic.
Our show apparently has a lot of attention, so we appreciate that. We had originally met with the staff this time.
Speak into the mic.
Can you hear me now? You're welcome. We met with the staff from the city, unlike other events. We met with the police department, we met with Bill, who's in charge, I guess, of the park over there. We asked anybody that had interest in meeting with us, we gave a time, and EMS, everyone showed up. Unfortunately, Mr. Brown, we weren't able to meet with you, but we did have an invitation open to anyone and all parties that wanted to come meet with us. We're still open to seeing how to meet. Part of the car's display was actually recommendation of staff of the police. They were actually really excited, they were walking around the park, they were walking around the street. And I said it would be really cool if we could do this, we could do that. They did say that if you're going to put any cars around the park, it cannot be in the grass, no problem. They said for the sidewalk, for pedestrians to be able to walk, they need about five feet from the curb to where the cars would be. We have no problem with that because they want people to be able to walk, they wanted wheelchair access, and they gave us guidelines to follow. And we've been in contact with them, we were just waiting to meet with everyone here to hopefully have an approval so we could continue working with city, with staff, with the police, with EMS. And that's where we're at. We're not here to try to, you know, barge away anywhere. Mr. Brown, like I said, we're willing to speak, go back out, and make sure that your answers and your questions and your concern are answered and that you have a comfort level. We're looking for relationships, we're not looking for one-night stands. So we want to make this work. And we're hoping that we could do it together. You know, everybody that heard that from, again, sorry to bring up the last show that was not going to take place, they were all upset. So we were trying to see where we could accommodate and facilitate this for the city.
Okay. Thank you. Can I ask, Phil, I'm going to ask Mr. Thornburg to come up, if you don't mind.
Have fun.
Thank you, Phil. Phil, does this event check all the boxes?
It does. I mean, staff, we met with the promoter, and please fire everybody at our event meeting. And after working through some of the challenges and thoughts on the park, everybody on staff and all the departments felt comfortable that they could bring this forward as a recommendation for approval.
Is the event going to occupy any part of the park, like with booths and things like that?
It is. So it's in the park as well as on the street and around, in the back of the park as well. So as was mentioned, staff looked at where they can maybe put a few cars up in the park. So they're going to actually put them on the sidewalk, not on the grass, not on the pavers. And make sure that there's still room for pedestrians to get by. The thought was to also add a few to the park to bring people to the park and then also into the street and around the area. So it's going to be not only in the festival street, but in the park as well.
And people who attend the event have the parking garage to park their own cars when they come to the beach, which is just down the street, right?
Correct.
Do we continue to have that shuttle that takes people from the parking garage onto the beach?
I don't think the shuttle, Ben would have to speak to that, but I don't know if the shuttle's still running or what the hours are for the shuttle nowadays.
Yeah, I think the Let It Go took the place of the shuttle, right? I don't think they're running anymore from the garage.
No.
Hey, good evening, Mayor Commissioner Ben Rogers, Transportation Mobility. So tonight's action, you actually appropriated funds at the last meeting and amended agreement for circuit, so the electric golf carts would be the servicing agent on the barrier island.
So we do have.
So we won't have the tram that's been existing out there, but we'll have the electric golf cart vehicles that will service that area.
Okay, all right. Anyone have any questions of Mr. Thornburg or Mr. Hirsch or Mr. Berkeley?
I do, Mayor. For Phil. Phil, so correct me if I'm wrong, but the night before, the Fort Lauderdale International Film Festival has an event in this exact spot, right?
I don't know that for sure, but.
I think they do. So help me understand, first of all, I counted the cars on the site plan, it looks like there's over 125 cars, really taking up a lot of the space. Again, I don't know where the thousands of people are going to navigate, because every little available inch has got a car on it, including that, I don't know, what do you call that road that's the furthest south where, like, service vehicles park right behind the.
Yeah, it's just where the tram used to come in.
Yeah, where the tram used to come in, even that's full of cars? Is it true that they want to load the park up with the cars at 2:00 AM, right after the Fort Lauderdale International Film Festival is done the night before?
I'll have to defer with him when they're actually going to bring the cars in. I know they're going to start setting up the night before.
Yeah, at 2:00 AM. Mayor, you know, God bless them, it's a successful, people love it. This is just not the right spot. This is just not the right spot. We need to find another spot. This will be a nightmare on that corner from the minute they start loading cars in at 2:00 AM. Neighbors are not going to be happy with that, and the film festival is ending right before that. I just see a potential for a lot of trouble, and it's not going to be manageable. We should look for another spot where there's a lot more open space. Again, I'm going to agree with the Central Beach Alliance. I'd also recommend, Phil, when something like this comes, obviously this wasn't through the usual channels of when there are those meetings with the planning of events, but the neighborhood association must be involved all the time. They have to be in the.
I believe they were at the meeting, I believe you were at our Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Yes, I mean, as we've discussed here before, Commissioner, the neighborhoods are invited and they are able to participate in our operational meetings, and it sounds like in this case that Bill was on the call when our staff, please fire everybody else in the operations side and the promoter.
But not invited for a logistical walkthrough of the site with everyone else?
We wouldn't, I mean, if they would have made that request, I'm sure we could have done that, but this is the first that I, you know.
Fair enough. Again, Mayor, I just think that we're trying to cram way too much in a very congested area and starting way too early in the morning. So again, that's my thought, and as I mentioned at my pre-agenda meeting, that was pretty much the consensus of everybody on that meeting last night. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. 8:00 AM? For some reason on the application it says 2:00 AM. Okay, all right, that's fine, okay. 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 Actually, I really can't have you speak there, you have to come up to the podium. I see one problem here, you're blocking my parking space, but that's okay.
Just so everybody can hear, because again, we were standing over there, load-in of the cars is around 8:00 AM, 2:00 AM was around MOT, doing what they need to do, but no cars would be there till around 8:00 AM. And then the other issue was, oh, the Zoom meeting, that Mr. Brown was there, and it was at that meeting that the date and time for the site, actual site visit, was planned. So everybody knew about it who was on the Zoom call. Thank you.
Where are the cars going to be before 8:00 AM?
John, you can answer, but it's my understanding.
Is it going to be a logistical challenge trying to cross over Seabreeze at 8:00, 9:00, 10:00, 11:00 AM? Wouldn't it even be better if you started at 2:00 AM when there were no cars on the road?
Obviously, but because of the community and stuff, we don't really, we don't want to, you know, obviously the more time we have, the better, but we don't want to try to impact, you know, the local neighborhood and cause any kind of issues. So what we usually do is, I have, my office is in far from there, 800 East Broward Boulevard.
Right.
So we have cars coming in there, loading there, and then they'll drive in their slots and fill it in. We were also told with the police department that some of those lanes that turn into where we're going to hopefully have the show, that they could drop there and turn in and take those trucks off-site, which again, would be able to park at 800 East Broward, removing any major traffic jam.
Okay. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any thoughts on this?
I don't know, I mean, I kind of, I hear Commissioner Glassman, what you're saying in your district and your neighbors. I mean, I'm torn, Parks and Rec has approved this, it's an event, we don't really deny a lot of events that have gone through this whole process. I don't know, I'm torn. What do you all think?
Well, I'm trying to just get all the information together. Vice Mayor, do you have any thoughts on this?
No, I mean, I have concerns. That.
Okay.
What happens if there's a two-two vote tonight?
What's that?
What happens if there's a two-two vote tonight?
Well, I don't, I don't know if we're going to be there, we'll see.
I mean, just not this, but in anything.
I don't know.
What does it mean, the item?
Two-two vote fails, it fails.
A two-two vote fails.
Two-two fails.
Yeah, but I don't know if there's going to be a two-two vote, we'll see.
Well, yeah, I'm just not talking about, I'm just thinking through the whole night. We have like 30 things to vote on.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay. So someone make a motion. Well, is there a motion for, a motion against? Make a motion. No one wants to make a motion. Well, I can't make a motion, so we're stuck. I guess we're just going to have to move on. Let me ask you a question. Have you talked to the folks at Bahiamar to use their site? They've got a huge open lot there.
That's a good idea.
Far less intrusive to the community. I know, I know. I know. Anyway, I don't know what to say, no one's making a motion and I can't.
Isn't the motion, M2, motion approving an event agreement?
Well, it could be whatever we want.
So isn't that the motion, Alan, or no?
Yeah, but there's no motion.
Someone has to make it.
Okay, so I'll introduce it. Introduce that motion approve.
All right, so there's a motion to approve, is there a second? There's no second.
Motion failed.
Can't make a second, can I? No. All right, so is a motion.
So if the motion fails, then we go on to the next.
We'll have to go on to the next.
Item on the agenda. Right, Alan? Correct.
All right. That's it? Okay, sorry, there's no second. All right, M3, motion approving the acceptance of the 2022-2023 State Housing Initiatives Partnership ship funds, allocating the funds in the program income.
Moved.
Anyone have any questions regarding this? Someone like to move the item?
Moved, second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie's not present, Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes. M4, motion approving the city of Fort Lauderdale voting delegate and alternate for the National League of Cities City Summit Annual Business Meeting, November 17th through the 19th. I guess, I guess I have, I'm the only one that can go.
I nominate the mayor, second serve as the representative to the National League of Cities.
Fantastic nomination.
Thank you.
We need an alternate.
Commissioner Glassman?
So.
I'll nominate Commissioner Glassman to be the alternate.
You don't have to attend, you only have to attend if I can't attend.
That's a gamble.
I'm not sure I can accept those conditions.
What's that?
I'm not sure I can accept that. Let's just go with.
You kind of have to.
Let's just go with you as the representative. We have to have an alternate?
You're too, you have to have an.
That's in the National League of Cities.
You don't really have to go.
You don't have to have an alternate.
Yeah, locally we do.
Move without an alternate.
All right, so just have the mayor.
Move with that, move the mayor.
Move the mayor.
Second.
Call the question.
Third.
Okay, move, call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Well done.
Motion appointing honored pioneer for Broward County Historic Preservation Board. Who's the honored pioneer?
Mayor, we did get a late nomination, we did get a nomination from the Historical Society, but I had a question for David.
Go ahead. Who's the nomination?
It looks like the Historical Society is recommending that we nominate Roosevelt Walters, and I'm perfectly fine with that, but if you read the letter from the Broward County Historic Preservation Board for Pioneer Day, they're actually asking that all of the cities not just nominate a pioneer, but they're also asking for nominations for those four special awards on page two of two on exhibit two. So David, are you going to be reaching out to the Historical Society to get their recommendations for those four awards as well?
The Judge Clayton Nance Memorial Award, the Dr. Cooper Kirk Award.
I'll work with Zach, he's been communicating with them. I know we have the one tonight. Originally, they were due yesterday, but they moved it, they said it could be a little later, so I'll work with Zach on that.
The event's not until October 15th, so I think we have time, even if we ratified those four awards in the first week in September, we'd be okay.
Right. You could pass Roosevelt tonight, and then you can, and then we could just bring back another motion for the other one, should we get the other?
Preservation Board, come back to us with recommendations?
Well, no, this isn't coming from the Historic Preservation Board, this is coming from, the Historical Society is making this recommendation. Looks like they were charged with recommending this to us?
It says the Broward County Historic Preservation Board is pleased to announce that its 2022 Pioneer Day event will be hosted by the city of Wilton Manors. So it's their Historic Preservation Board, but I'm saying, can our Historic Preservation Board, can we charge them with coming up with names?
Well, it looks like that responsibility fell to the Historical Society, not our Preservation Board, right, David? It looks like it.
Yes, but has the historic, has the Fort Lauderdale Historical Society, are they kind of, are you still part of that, Robert? Is the Historical Society going to give us names that they would like us to recommend?
They only gave us Roosevelt Walters.
They gave us for the pioneer.
Right. They did not provide anything else.
So someone, I mean, I don't think it's our responsibility to come up with these names, I think we should rely upon our Historic Preservation Board to see if they can come up with four names to fill these four slots? Don't you think so, folks?
Well, maybe they can work in conjunction with the Historical Society. How did this fall under the Historical Society? They've done it in the past, right? They gave us names in the past when Broward County had this event. I remember them giving us names, and we got their biographies and we ratified those recommendations, but it always seems to have come. See, even if you look at the CAM, it says the invitees, meaning us, are asked to engage a historical society in their city to facilitate nominees.
It says with consideration of the above requests, the Fort Lauderdale Historical Society will be submitting the nomination, the nomination, singular. That's fine with regard to the pioneer, but what about the other four?
I understand, maybe.
So David, could you contact the Historic, our Historic Preservation Board and ask them at their next meeting to come up with four recommendations with regard to, okay? Because their meeting is in October, they're wanting to have this on October 15th, so it gives us a little time.
Mayor, but if you read the four awards?
Yeah.
And if you look at the categories, it always seems to involve study and promotion of local history, or local history and/or historical research. I'm not quite sure our Historic Preservation Board that that's part of their mission. They don't typically get into local history, study of, research of, that's probably why this fell into the lap of the Historical Society. Yes, because that's more of their mission than it is our Historical Preservation Board.
All right, so why don't we go back to the Historical Society and ask them to come up with names for the balance of the categories? Let's do that.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. So what about?
Roosevelt.
What about M5?
Well, I nominate that, well, I move that we nominate the recommendation of Roosevelt Walters as the pioneer. as the pioneer for Broward County Pioneer Day 2022.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second, second.
Seconded. All right, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. R1, appointment of board members, board and committee members. Do you want to please call, recite the names into the record?
Yes. For the September 6th resolution, consensus, we have Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board Edward Catalano, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Public Art and Placement Advisory Board Sarah Glass, that's a reappointment, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson, and Gregory Reed, consensus. He's the chair of the Broward County's Public Art and Design Committee, and he's a new appointment. And then Civil Service Board Jeffrey Showen, and that's nominated, or he's appointed by the city manager. And also in the backup, we have the 2022 Beach Business Improvement District Top 10 Assessed Properties. I put that in the backup and the names will be read off into the record at the next meeting as well. And then for tonight's resolution, for the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee, Susan Sprague, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Budget Advisory Board Brian Donaldson, nominated by Mayor Trentalas. Jeff Lowe, nominated by Mayor Trentalas. Michael Marshall, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Prabhu Ling Patel, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. Ross Camerata, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Cemetery System Board of Trustees Frederick Nesbit, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Richard Kurtz, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Central City Redevelopment Advisory Board Christina Robinson, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Joseph Maka, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Charter Revision Board Dan Limbley, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. Citizens Police Review Board Antonia Johnson, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Community Appearance Board April Young, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Community Service Boards Elizabeth Capito, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Sharon Hughes, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Education Advisory Board Amy Elwitz, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Susan Dean, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. And Tina Yaramilo, nominated by Mayor Trentalas. Invest Fort Lauderdale Inc. Board of Directors Nikki Austin Ship, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. Marine Advisory Board James Harrison, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Brewster Knott, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. Parks, Rec and Beaches Board Alex Colazo, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Deborah Rosenbaum, nominated by Commissioner Glassman. Joy Oglesby, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Mary Anna Seiler, nominated by Commissioner McKenzie. Planning and Zoning Board Patrick Metteeg, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson. Public Art and Placement Advisory Board Martha Gutierrez Steinkamp, nominated by Commissioner Moritas. And Sustainability Advisory Board Matthew McIntosh, nominated by Vice Mayor Sorenson, and that rounds it out.
Okay, would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Thank you.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, appointing or nominating, if applicable, board and committee members as set forth in the exhibit attached here too, made a part here of. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and I want to thank all those people who have agreed to volunteer to serve on those boards and committees. Thank you for your commitment and your sacrifice to our city. Okay, we have quite a few items on the rest of the agenda, so let's see if we can get through them quickly. R2, resolution authorizing reconveyance of sidewalk rights of way by curative quick claim deed pursuant to Florida statute, Northwest 7th Avenue, Northwest 4th Street. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
Introduce. Any questions? There being none, please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida pursuant to Florida statute section 255.22, authorizing reconveyance of, by a curative quick claim deed to 6th Street Corporation, a Florida corporation of a 10-foot sidewalk right-of-way easement, a 5-foot sidewalk right-of-way easement, and an executed and recorded but not delivered to nor accepted by the city. A phantom September 20th, 2000 right-of-way dedication authorizing execution, delivery and recording of a curative quick claim deed to 6th Street of A, B and C, A, B and C above, providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. R3, resolution for an affordable housing development agreement between Sunshine Shipyard LLC and the city of Fort Lauderdale for 48 residential affordable housing units to be set aside in perpetuity. This is a much larger development and 48 units out of the total are going to be set aside as affordable housing. What is the percent of AMI that you need to qualify for this?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the commission, Debbie Orchevsky, on behalf of the applicant, with me is A.L. Parats, the developer. Under your code, in order to, we have 10% of the 480 units proposed. The 48 will be affordable, and they will be restricted to not more than 100% of AMI per your code requirement.
Okay, all right.
And we're very pleased, by the way, to be providing these within a larger development, which has, it's onces drunk, and it has 15,000 square feet of commercial use so that we can have meaningful commercial within that building.
Great, thank you. We appreciate that.
Yeah, it's a beautiful project. I look forward to it. As you mentioned, Mayor, it is in District 2, even though the CAM says District 3. It is District 2.
Well, it just adds to our supply of affordable housing. We appreciate that.
Yes, it's a great project. It's gonna look beautiful right across the street from Thrive Progresso. It's gonna really create a nice synergy over there.
Great. Want to introduce the resolution?
I'd be happy to.
Introduction, the resolution's been introduced. Please call the roll.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving an affordable housing agreement with Sunshine Shipyard LLC, delegating authority to the city manager to execute such agreements together with any supplemental documents in connection therewith and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the resolution's approved. Thank you. Congratulations. And thank you for your patience for waiting tonight. R4, quasi judicial resolution approving a site plan Level 2 development permit in alternative design deviation. This is Flagler 6th LLC. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
Yes.
I'm sure the developer bent your ear on this.
Did we meet in 2018? It goes back that far. 8/13/2018, okay? 8/31/2021 and 6/20/2022. Is that possible? Yeah, it's possible. Interesting.
Did you have any communications with the developer or the representative?
That's what I just said.
I didn't hear you. I didn't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did this work?
I couldn't hear you.
Did someone, did you get me? Yeah, okay, I said three.
Did you hear it? Okay, I couldn't hear it. I'm sorry.
Sorry, it's, this?
Yeah, I know.
I started meeting years ago, 2018.
I'm sorry, thank you. Yes, I had communications with the developer and their representative, and I did a site visit. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, I have the same ones. I actually have the specific dates, but unfortunately, I brought that upstairs on our break and I left it there. I can get back to you with the specific dates, but I have those same disclosures.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
Yes, with applicant.
Okay, no one signed up to speak. Someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Second, second. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. Public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
And that's for approval?
Yes, I'm sorry.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a site plan Level 2 development permit for an alternative design that meets the overall intent of the downtown master plan for the development of a 30-floor tower with 320 residential units, 30,072 square feet commercial space with an associated parking reduction request for mixed-use project known as Flagler Residences located at 513-517 Northeast 6th Street, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, in the RACUV zoning district. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the resolution's approved.
By the way, Mayor, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be specific. So it was on September 15th, 2021, that I met with council.
Thank you. I can sleep now. Okay. R5.
Hey.
Quasi judicial resolution vacating a 5-foot wide by 155.92-foot long sidewalk easement locating, located south of Tarpin River, east of Southeast 3rd Avenue, west of Southeast 4th Avenue, and north of Southeast 11th Street. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
None.
I don't have any disclosures either. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay, no one has signed up to speak. Someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Moving seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. Public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the resolution?
Introduced.
R5 is now introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating a 5-foot public sidewalk easement being the north 5 feet of lots 10 and 15, Block 2, Lauderdale, according to the plat thereof, recorded in plat book 2, page 9 of the public records of Dade County, Florida. Said easement being a portion described as a perpetual easement in deed book 565, page 273 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Southeast 11th Street, south of Tarpin River, west, west of Southeast 4th Avenue, and east of Southeast 3rd Avenue, all said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R5 is approved. R6, also quasi judicial resolution vacating a 5-foot wide by 138-foot long sidewalk easement located north of Southeast 11th Street, east of Southeast 3rd Avenue, and west of Southeast 4th Avenues, and south of Tarpin River. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
No.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
None, okay. No one has signed up to speak. Someone please make a motion to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Moving seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Scared me. Yes, sir. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce R6?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating a 5-foot public sidewalk easement being the north 5 feet of the south 33 feet of lots 9 and 16, Block 2, Lauderdale, according to the plat thereof, recorded in plat book 2, page 9 of the public records of Dade County, Florida. Said easement being a portion described as a perpetual easement in deed book 565, page 273 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of Southeast 11th Street, south of Tarpin River, west of Southeast 4th Avenue, and east of Southeast 3rd Avenue, all said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and the resolution is now approved. Resolution's now approved. R7, another quasi judicial resolution approving the plat known as Marina Landings located at 2300 Southwest 15th Avenue, the Bud Robinson Memorial Church of the Nazarene. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
Yes, I met with Robert Lockery on 8/31, and I believe it was 21, it was last year. Yeah.
Okay, I also met with Mr. Lockery on this. Commissioner Glassman?
Yes, met with Mr. Lockery on August 19th, 2021.
Yes, representative. Okay. Mr. Lockery, you just signed up to speak if you want, for answering any questions. So someone like to move to close public hearing?
Move.
Second.
Moving seconded. Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce R7?
Introduced.
And that's approving?
To approve.
Yes, I'm sorry, to approve.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a plat entitled Marina Landings and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R7's approved. R8, quasi judicial, you're just packing them on tonight. Quasi judicial resolution approving plat known as Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters.
Yeah.
Plat located at 1300 West Broward Boulevard. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Well, of course, we've had communications where with-
Well, I don't think we have to disclose those, right?
Staff, right.
Staff doesn't count.
No, not with staff, no.
Yeah, so it's our project.
Correct.
So.
All right, so.
Nothing for the next three.
Right, so.
Well, Mayor, I would disclose that I also had several conversations with folks from the Sail Open Civic Association on it.
Okay.
Does, I think, and a site visit.
I don't know whether you need to disclose that.
No, do we just, would we disclose correspondence with neighborhood associations and residents?
No.
No, but site visits you should. Site visit for sure.
Okay.
Several.
Yanik, where are you? There you are. Okay, you just signed up to all these things in case we have any questions, right? Are you here on behalf of the developer? The architect, okay. All right, so someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce?
Introduced.
R8.
And that's for approval?
For approval.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving a plat entitled Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes. So now, R9 is going to be taken up after OSR1, right?
Correct.
So we'll skip that right now. R10, quasi judicial resolution approving vacation of a utility easement located at 1300 West Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. Announce any site visits, communications or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Anyone have any disclosures with regard to this?
No.
Any disclosures? I have no disclosures, okay. Someone, Yanik, you're just here for questions. So someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yep.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce the resolution for approval?
Introduced.
A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating that certain 10-foot retained utility easement described in official records book 13309, page 543 of the public records of Broward County, Florida, lying between lots 5 through 14 and lots 15 through 24, Block 125, Waverly Place, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book 2, page 19 of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located west of Southwest 12th Avenue, north of Middle Street, east of Southwest 14th Avenue, and south of West Broward Boulevard, all said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalas?
Yes, and R10 is now approved. Moving on to public hearings, public, page 1, public hearing quasi judicial ordinance for the vacation of a right-of-way the vacation of a right-of-way forty-foot wide by a hundred-foot-long portion of southwest First Street, Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Again, there's no real disclosures?
No.
No disclosures, okay. Someone, we have Yanik who's signed up to speak, but it's just for questions. Someone like to please close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce the ordinance of page one?
Introduced.
An ordinance vacating a portion of that certain forty-foot right-of-way for southwest First Street, lying between lots one through four, block one twenty-five, and lots twenty-five through twenty-eight, block one eighteen, Waverly Place, according to the plat thereof as recorded in plat book two, page nineteen of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located west of southwest Twelfth Avenue, north of Middle Street, east of southwest Fourteenth Avenue, and south of West Broward Boulevard, all said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, so, page one, quasi-judicial ordinance is now approved. Page two, it's a public hearing on a quasi-judicial ordinance for the vacation of a right-of-way ten-foot wide by a hundred-foot-long portion of the east-west alley, lying north of southwest Second Court, east of southwest Fourteenth Avenue, south of Broward Boulevard, and west of southwest Twelfth Avenue, the Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. Commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Any disclosures?
No.
No disclosures, okay. Just questions. Okay. Someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce page two?
Introduced.
An ordinance vacating a portion of that certain ten-foot alley right-of-way lying between lots one through four and lots twenty-five through twenty-eight, block one twenty-five, Waverly Place, according to that, to the plat thereof as recorded in plat book two, page nineteen of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located west of southwest Twelfth Avenue, north of Middle Street, east of southwest Fourteenth Avenue, and south of West Broward Boulevard, all said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and public hearing two, quasi-judicial ordinance is now approved. Page three, public hearing quasi-judicial ordinance approving a public purpose use and structure. This is the Big McGilla, one hundred ninety-one thousand square-foot police facility, Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Any disclosures?
None.
None?
None.
I mean, we, the only disclosure we have is our meetings with the architects. I mean, we've, obviously, we've all talked with them, but since we're the applicant-
I'm interested in how many times Commissioner Glassman has been to the police headquarters, and what circumstances, and was this in the back of a squad car, was this? What, I'd like to hear more about that, please.
We'll talk after the meeting.
I think that'd be appropriate.
Okay. I think they take him through the back door.
Mayor, I think so.
Okay.
That's relevant.
Okay, close public hearing.
Okay, someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved.
It's just a-
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance of page three?
Introduced.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, approving as a public purpose use and structure pursuant to section forty-seven dash eighteen point twenty-six of the City of Fort Lauderdale Unified Land Development Regulations, a hundred ninety-one thousand square-foot police facility generally located at thirteen hundred West Broward Boulevard, Fort Lauderdale, Florida, and legally described as all blocks of, all blocks one seventeen, one eighteen, and one twenty-five, together with the vacated streets and alleys lying within said blocks, Waverly Place, according to the plat thereof as recorded in plat book two, page nineteen, public records of Dade County, Florida, less right-of-way for West Broward Boulevard, together with the north eight hundred and fifty-five feet of lot seven, the north nine hundred feet of lot eight, and the north eight hundred and fifty feet of lot nine, all less right-of-way for West Broward Boulevard Valentine subdivision, according to the plat thereof as recorded in plat book B, page twenty-nine of the public records of Dade County, Florida. Said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, granting relief from specific zoning regulations and approving associated conceptual site plan. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes. And that item is now approved, so, Greg, when are we going to have the final numbers on the cost here?
So, we received the notification today, and I believe in, we're two weeks out from getting those estimates.
So, we received the communication?
Yeah, we received the communications, actually, yesterday, and the estimate is due on September second.
September second, okay. Page four, public hearing, quasi-judicial ordinance vacating a right-of-way identified as a fifty-foot wide by three hundred-foot-long portion of southeast Fourth Avenue, located north of southeast Eleventh Street, south of the Tarpon River, west of the South Federal Highway, and east of southeast Third Avenue. This is the United States of America. This must be related to the federal courthouse.
Correct.
Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. I have no one signed in to speak. Does anyone have any disclosures here?
No.
Mayor, I've been talking at GSA for a while, so let me just disclose that.
And I've been attending the meetings-
Right.
-of the courthouse committee, so that would be my disclosure. I did attend a couple of the meetings with the architects.
Yep, me too.
Yeah, so, I think it's unanimous that everyone hates the design. Anyway.
Mayor, I'd like to know how many times the vice mayor's been to the courthouse?
Courthouse, just an observer.
Exactly under what circumstances?
Wasn't directly involved, just purely observational.
Okay.
Learning experience.
All right, thank you, just checking, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thanks, Phil, exactly.
Would someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Moving seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce the ordinance of page four?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida vacating that certain fifty-foot, fifty-foot-wide southeast Fourth Avenue right-of-way adjacent to the east line of lots seven through twelve, block two, Lauderdale, according to the plat thereof recorded in plat book two, at page nine of the public records of Dade County, Florida, also adjacent to the west line of parcel A, reamended plat of block three, Lauderdale, according to the plat thereof recorded in plat book forty-nine, at page thirty-nine of the public records of Broward County, Florida, located north of southeast Eleventh Street, south of Tarpon River, west of South Federal Highway, and east of southeast Third Avenue, all said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner? Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and the ordinance is now approved. Moving on to page five, public hearing, quasi-judicial ordinance vacating a right-of-way identified by a twenty-eight-foot wide by a three hundred and four-foot-long portion of southeast Tenth Court, located north of southeast Eleventh Street, south of the Tarpon River, west of southeast Fourth Avenue, east of southeast Third Avenue, United States of America. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas?
None.
I have the same disclosures that I previously disclosed with regard to page four. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
Vice Mayor?
I have the same I disclosed previously, thanks, Mayor.
Okay, no one has signed up to speak. Someone please move to close public hearing?
Moved. Second.
Moving seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, someone like to introduce the ordinance of page five?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
An ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, vacating that certain twenty-foot right-of-way known as southeast Tenth Court, being a portion of lots nine and sixteen, block two, Lauderdale, according to the plat thereof recorded in plat book two, at page nine of the public records of Dade County, Florida, located north of southeast Eleventh Street, south of Tarpon River, west of southeast Fourth Avenue, and east of southeast Third Avenue, all said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and page five is now approved. Page six, this is a public hearing, quasi-judicial ordinance vacating a ten-foot wide by a hundred and twenty-four-foot-long portion of an alley, located north of southeast Eighth Street, east of southeast Fourth Avenue, south of southeast Seventh Street, and west of South Federal Highway. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
None.
I don't, Mr. Lockery, I don't think we met on this, per se. I don't think so, okay. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay, one person signed up to speak, Mr. Lockery, but that's for questions only. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, someone like to introduce the motion?
Introduced.
Second, someone like to second the motion? Second, this is a closed public hearing.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
An ordinance vacating that certain ten-foot-wide-platted alley adjacent to lots three and six, Fisher Division, lot one, block fifty-eight, according to the plat thereof recorded in plat book one, at page thirty-four, the public records of Dade County, Florida, less that portion taken for State Road Five widening, located north of southeast Eighth Street, south of southeast Seventh Street, west of South Federal Highway, and east of southeast Fourth Avenue, all said land situate, lying and being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, and page six is now approved. Page seven, it's a public hearing, a quasi-judicial ordinance rezoning of point one-one acres from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to community business district through the allocation of point eleven acres of non-residential flex acreage, and approval of an associated site development permit for a self-storage facility at eighteen hundred State Road LLC. This is at eighteen hundred West State Road eighty-four. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received, and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
None.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
None.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
None.
None, okay, we have one person who's signed up to speak, Davina Bean. Is that you?
That is me, hello, how you doing?
This evening. Thank you for your patience for waiting tonight, please.
All right, thank you for having me. My name is Davina Bean, I'm the marketing company president for U-Haul. I'm here to address the issue that we currently have as of right now. On my property currently, we have two zoning issues in reference to a discrepancy in reference to the separation of a small partial, a small portion of my parcel that's there for zero point one-one of the acres. I'm asking for you guys to rezone that area from the RMM twenty-five to a CB district to allow-
So, you're in favor of the, you're in favor of it?
That is correct.
You're good.
All right.
Thank you. Someone like to move to close public hearing?
Moved.
Second.
Moving seconded?
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles?
Yes, public hearing is now closed. Someone like to introduce the ordinance on page seven?
Introduced.
An ordinance amending section forty-seven dash one point six B of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the city of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto, and by reference made a part thereof, so as to resume, rezone from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density zoning district to community business zoning district through the allocation of non-residential flexibility acreage, a portion of tract twenty-three, according to the plat thereof as recorded in plat book one, page forty-six, of the public records of Dade County, Florida, beginning at the southwest corner of folio number five oh four two two one zero one zero three one one, according to the Broward County Property Appraiser, thence north along the west line of said folio number, a distance of one point six seven feet to the south line of zone B two, as shown on City of Fort Lauderdale zoning map, thence northeasterly along southerly line, a distance of two hundred point five nine feet to the east line of said folio number, thence south along the east line of said folio number, a distance of forty-nine point thirty-five feet to the southeast corner thereof, thence west along the south line of said folio number, a distance of one hundred ninety-three point twenty feet to the point of beginning located west of southwest Fifteenth Avenue, north of southwest Twenty-Ninth Street, south of State Road eighty-four, and east of southwest Eighteenth Terrace, all said lands being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner McKenzie, oh, Commissioner Glassman?
Could you repeat that, David? I'm just, yes. I vote yes.
No, I can't.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Sorry, yeah, before I, before I vote, I just wanted to check, through planning
through planning zoning, you've had some good conversations with the neighborhoods, right? And so Edgewood was concerned about some of the traffic. River Oaks was concerned about the look, it sounds like adjustments to the look, and then traffic, it seems like Edgewood, Wendy Willis, was pretty comfortable with traffic analysis and so forth, is that?
That is correct, we did resolve the issues with the neighbors as well as provide them a traffic outline, and we pretty much came together in reference to the buffering from the community as well.
Right, and it seems like egress and ingress seemed okay after you guys talked through it and.
Yes, that is correct.
Yeah, um, I haven't heard anything further from the neighborhoods, which is good. In terms of, it seems like, you know, appreciate your partnership, seems like, uh, that, that communication and engagement has been working out well, so, um, great, okay, thank you. Uh, yes, David?
And Mayor Trentalles.
Yes. So, PH seven, the ordinance is now approved, thank you.
Thank you.
PH eight, public hearing and ordinance amending the comprehensive plan to add utility excluding electrical power plants used to the employment center land use designation citywide. Uh-huh. Any questions? No one signed up to speak? We don't have to close public hearing?
No.
So, would someone like to, uh, introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
It's been introduced.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending the City of Fort Lauderdale Comprehensive Future Land Use Element Policy one point one point nine to add utilities excluding electric power plants as a permitted use to the employment center land use designation, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions transmittal to the applicable reviewing agencies and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and, uh, PH eight is now approved. Moving on to OFR one, this is ordinance of first reading. This is an ordinance repealing the ordinance number C twelve-ten, adopted on May first, twenty-twelve, and amending chapter sixteen, article six of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida. It's to delete and replace section sixteen dash eighty-two entitled Panhandling, Begging, or Solicitation with section sixteen dash eighty-two entitled Obstructing Police Streets and Rights of Way. No one has signed up to speak. Have you all read the ordinance? You all comfortable with it? Okay, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
Introduced.
Or, or repealing it?
Yeah, but this is just the repealing, right?
You're repealing and replacing, so. We're, we're repealing sixteen eighty-two and replacing it with the new, uh, language.
Next.
Please call the roll.
In ordinance of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, repealing City of Fort Lauderdale ordinance number C dash twelve dash ten, which ordinance amended chapter sixteen, article four, the City of Fort Lauderdale Code of Ordinances and deleting and replacing section sixteen dash eighty-two entitled Panhandling, Begging, or Solicitation with section eight, sixteen point eight-two entitled Obstructing Public Streets and Rights of Way, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and repeal, providing for correction of scriven errors, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved on first reading. Perhaps, Chief, you might consider talking to us at the second reading about the action plan you're considering to enforce this ordinance? Right?
We can get that.
Okay. OFR two, this is, uh, also an ordinance on first reading, uh, amending section twenty-five dash two sixty-seven of the City of Fort Lauderdale Florida Code of Ordinances entitled Right-of-Way Solicitors and Canvassers. No one has signed up to speak. Anyone have any questions? There being none?
Mayor, if I could just, uh, state very quickly that the ordinance is predicated upon traffic crash data that we have and, uh, which supports the intersections that have been listed in the ordinance. Between first and second reading, we'll probably be adding some additional intersections based on traffic density, which would probably constitute, uh, intersections that have an F, D, or E rating. So there may be some additional intersections added between first and second reading.
Okay. Any, anyone have any questions? Okay, there being none, would someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
In ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending article eleven entitled Solicitation Display on Public Rights of Ways, section twenty-five dash two-six-seven entitled Right-of-Way Solicitors and Canvassers of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, to amend regulations pertaining to persons soliciting and rights of ways, providing for severability, repeal of conflicting ordinance provisions, and providing for an effective date. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and the ordinance is approved on first reading. We now come to OSR one, which is an ordinance on second reading. It's a quasi judicial ordinance approving a rezoning from Bal- excuse me, from Boulevard Business and from residential multifamily mid-rise medium-high-density district to community facility district, Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters. Okay, anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in, and the commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Commissioner Moritas, do you have any disclosures?
No.
I have none. Commissioner Glassman?
No.
And Vice Mayor?
None.
Okay, um, Yanique has signed up to speak, only if there are questions. So, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Moved second.
Moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, someone like to introduce the ordinance?
Introduced.
The ordinance has been introduced.
In ordinance amending the Unified Land Development Regulations of the City of Fort Lauderdale, Florida, amending section forty-seven dash one point six point B of the Unified Land Development Regulations through the revision of the official zoning map of the City of Fort Lauderdale in Schedule A revised compilation attached thereto and by, by reference made a part thereof, so as to rezone from B one Boulevard Business District to CF Community Facility District, lots fifteen through twenty-eight, block one twenty-five, Waverly Place, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book Two, page nineteen of the Public Records of Dade County, Florida, and to rezone from RMM twenty-five Residential Multifamily Midrise Medium High Density District to CF Community Facility Districts, District Lot, lots one through four, block one twenty-five, Waverly Place, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in Plat Book Two, page nineteen of the Public Records of Dade County, Florida, located west of southwest Twelfth Avenue, north of southwest First Street, east of southwest Fourteenth Avenue, and south of West Broward Boulevard, all said lands being in the city of Fort Lauderdale, Broward County, Florida. Commissioner Moritas?
Yes.
Commissioner Glassman?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sorenson?
Yes.
Mayor Trentalles.
Yes, and that ordinance is now approved on second reading. Let's jump back to R nine. This is a quasi judicial, quasi judicial resolution approving a site plan level four development permit with a conditional use approval for an outdoor, for an indoor firearms range and parking reduction request for a forty-eight-foot-high, one hundred ninety-one thousand square-foot Fort Lauderdale Police Headquarters building with a parking garage and community center. Anyone wishing to speak must be sworn in. The commission will announce any site visits, communications, or expert opinions received and make them a part of the record. Uh, we have one person who signed up to speak, Yanique, only for questions. Do you have any disclosures?
No.
I have none.[1621.43]